Good evening. My name is Brian Haggerty. I'm the Chairman of the Board of the El Paso Community College Board of Trustees. I want to welcome you all to our meeting tonight. Anyone listening in that would like to join this meeting on the Internet can go to www. youtube.com/ user/goepcc. Go ahead and call the roll, Bill.
Mr. Uxer.
Here.
Ms. Nahara.
Here.
Dr. Graham.
Here.
Mr. Haggerty.
Here.
Mrs. Robles will not be at tonight's meeting.
Okay, before we get started, could we all rise and say the Pledge of Leasur, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, again, I'd like to welcome everyone to our meeting. Bill, go ahead and, I believe we got it, 1.4.
1.4, Approval of Minutes, there are none. Item 1.5, Welcome to Guests and Staff Members. Item 1.6, Open Forum, there are none. Section 1.7, Presentations by Individuals, Groups, and Organizations. Item 1.7.1, Optional Presentations will be made by the Presidents of the Classified Staff Association, the Professional Staff Association, the Faculty Association, and the Student Government Association. Dr. Burnham is sorry, but he is not able to make his presentation today.
Oh, no.
What happened?
He'll be here at the next board meeting.
Oh, okay.
Good evening, Chair Haggerty, members of the Board, Presidents Serrata, staff and guests. I'm Laura Gethther, President of Classified Staff Association. I would like to begin with a brief summary of CSA's activities since my last presentation in November and say I'm sorry for not being able to attend any board meeting sooner as I was out due to a knee replacement. I'd like to start with our Christmas Dance in December, which was quite a success. Ninety-six out of the 115 tickets were sold. CSA officers all volunteered to provide and cook the food for the dance, and although quite the task, everyone at the dance enjoyed themselves. We had a lot of new employees join us, and they had nothing but great things to say about our annual Christmas dance. Glad to say this is our first year not being in the red sponsoring the dance. CSA made a $200 donation in prizes for the annual staff retreat sponsored by Human Resources Development. CSA also made a $240 donation for Easter baskets, which went to El Paso Border Crusaders to distribute to the Reynolds House, Child Crisis Center, and Children's Hospital. Additionally, we provided monetary assistance to one of our constituents through our CSA's Emergency Relief Fund. This fund is available to all CSA employees who meet the eligibility criteria, including a catastrophic natural disaster or a life-threatening medical emergency. The Employee Relief Fund application, including details on required documentation, is available on the CSA webpage on the EPCC website. Now, I would like to discuss compensation. We, the Classified Staff Association Council, stand before you as voice of our constituents to ask that you revisit and update some of the pay grade salaries that are almost at minimum wage. We are closing in on a decade since the Evergreen Study took place in 2015, and we believe the compensation tables are no longer competitive with the labor market. We still have some positions with the lowest pay compared to other community colleges in the state, based on the same or of less population, as well as in comparison with local school districts. Due to low compensation, we have seen a lack of interest in people wanting to apply to our jobs. This results in extra work and stress for our current employees, who are already doing their best to provide adequate services to our students and community. Since the beginning of this fiscal year, I've had quite a few email conversations with our faculty members about some of the part-time employees in their area who are making just 22 cents more than minimum wage. And as much as they wanted to voice their opinions and speak to the Board about these positions, they felt it was more adequate for CSA to voice those opinions. We asked the Board to consider and revisit a future study for the compensation tables, to compare them with other cities that we are compatible with, based on similar or same positions in their community colleges. We want our constituents to feel appreciated, and that all the extra work that they have been doing is not being overlooked. We understand that the financial situation affects many people worldwide. Therefore, we ask of you to consider a respectable pay raise, based on how much household and consumer goods have all increased after COVID. We see no end of anything decreasing anytime soon, and ask that you take into consideration that some of our constituents have difficulty making ends meet, having to work a second job, and finally, sometimes losing those constituents to better-paying jobs outside of EPCC. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Students?
Section 1.8, Communications. Item 1.8.1, Discussion and Review Regarding Data Statistics Policies and General Information Related to El Paso Community College by the Board of Trustees.
Chair Haggerty and members of the Board, we had slated Mr. Fernando Flores, our Vice President for Finance and Administration, to present to the Board our first round of the budget. We did that during our retreat this past weekend, therefore, we will table 1.8.1, or we'd suggest to the Board that you table that until the next meeting.
I make a motion that we table that until the next meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question.
Mr. Uxer.
Aye.
Ms. Nahara.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Haggerty.
Aye.
Section 1.9, Board of Trustees Business. Item 1.9.1, 1.9.2, and 1.9.3 will be discussed after Executive Session. Section 1.10, Board Report. Item 1.10.1, Treasurer's Report, No Action Is Required. This includes May 31, 2024 Financial Statements. Item 1.10.2, President's Report. Item 1.10.2.1, Dr. William Serrata, College President, will update the Board of Trustees and audience on recent events that have transpired at El Paso Community College.
Good afternoon, Chair Haggerty, members of the Board. I'd like to begin my report by sharing that Mr. Jesus Mendez was appointed by the Board for the remainder of the term for District 4. Mr. Mendez is unable to join us this evening due to a long-planned trip before tonight's board meeting. We look forward to formally welcoming Mr. Mendez at next month's board meeting. The Fashion Technology Program Students won three awards at the 2024 Fashion Group International, also known as FGI in Dallas, Texas. The FGI Scholarship Fashion Showcase highlighted 140 designs from over 100 designers from both the two-year and four-year colleges. Of those three awards, Daniel Rodriguez took first place in the bridal and black tie. The categories were evening wear, bridals, sustainability, streetwear/daywear, and cocktail/party wear. EPCC Fashion Technology Students overall placed in the top 5% at the competition. Daniel Rodriguez, Fashion Design Major, won first place in bridal. Daniel's focus was bridal and sustainability, completing his look over two to three months. His look was displayed on a live modal at the event, and his victory resulted in a $2,000 scholarship, an internship opportunity, employment opportunity, and a special invitation to showcase at the FGI's annual DIFFA event, raising money for AIDS awareness. Congratulations to our fashion tech students. This summer, Erika Batres, EPCC Acting Student, will attend a summer intensive program with the T. Schreiber Studio and Theater in New York City for five exciting weeks. The program incorporates an intense, hands-on approach to developing actors' on-camera skills, designed to deepen the technique, increase comfort on camera, and create custom professional footage for a read. We're excited to see the opportunities Eric will have after his program in the Big Apple. Break the leg. The 2024 Leadership Academy, in conjunction with Career and Transfer Services, will be holding a brand-new campus closet on Wednesday, June 19, at the Valle Verde Campus Cafeteria Annex, which will provide students a place to donate or exchange clothing. The Leadership Academy is aiming for a permanent program for their annual project, which still needs administrative approval, and grants to help fund the program. The EPCC Leadership Academy program faculty and staff members join together to complete this project initiative. Many thanks to Karen Kaplowitz, Angie Cifuentes, Yvette Loyah, Paulina de Santiago, Brenda Ramos, and Maria Carillo for taking on this initiative. EPCC's Government Association, Campus Life, as well as Western Hills United Methodist Church, offered 150 free lunches to students, faculty, and staff at the Valle Verde Campus Tejano Mercado. Thank you to Nadia Rivas, Student Leadership and Campus Life Director, and her staff for ensuring that students received a hot meal. EPCC hosted the Bi-National Border Cyber Security Summit at the Valle Verde Campus. The summit featured speakers from EPCC, Microsoft, Artificial Intelligence Center of Ciudad Juarez, New Mexico State, Border Plex Alliance, the US Army Drug Enforcement Administration, and the FBI. El Paso ISD, Esleta ISD, as well as Socorro ISD represented P-Tech Cyber Security Partners. EPCC also featured Regions Investing in the Next Generation, also known as Ring, an innovative cybersecurity course designed to engage and support high school students in pursuing a career in cybersecurity. Many thanks to Dr. Savin for his great work organizing this event. The college was designated as a Center for Academic Excellence, or CAE, in cyber defense for 2024 through 2029. This achievement marks a significant milestone, bringing national recognition to the college. The rigorous process of obtaining this designation underscores our dedication to our academic program, curriculum, and institutional infrastructure to education and cybersecurity. Designation as a CAE opens numerous opportunities, including producing competitive graduates primed for the workforce, assessing research and funding opportunities, and fostering exceptional collaborations with other CAEs nationwide. Dr. Christian Savin worked with the IT Computer Science and Health Occupations faculty and led this work and submission. Congratulations to Dr. Pagel, Dr. Savin, and all faculty involved in achieving this important recognition. Earlier this month, 16 EPCC Endure Credit students attended the Transportation Research Immersion Program Trip at UTEP. The goal of this immersion camp was to provide high school students and undergraduate students at EPCC with a one-week experience in transportation careers and research. The camp began with a field trip to local industries such as TechDOT and the City of El Paso Transportation Center. Students received career information, toured the facilities, participated in a project demonstration at the facilities, and networked with professionals. Throughout the week, faculty provided hands-on workshops at UTEP focused on transportation research projects surrounding planning, materials, structures, construction, and the future of transportation. In addition, students toured the transportation research labs at UTEP. The cap ended with a cookout where students could network with UTEP faculty and students and learn more about the transportation student organizations there. Students were fully engaged and committed to the program and enjoyed their experience. All students received a $150 stipend for their participation. The Transportation Research Immersion Program and student stipends were provided by the Southern Plains Transportation Center, grant-funded by the US Department of Transportation. Special thanks to Ms. Yvette Chukap, math professor at the Valle Verde Campus, for coordinating the event with Dr. Joanne Moyer, civil engineering professor at UTEP. EPCC is responding to the needs of the greater El Paso area ESL learners, referring low-scoring ESL acuplacer students to the Center for College Access and Development. ESL Bridge and ESL Pre-Bridge has proven to be a good strategy for second-language learners. Last fall, 75% of the ESL Bridge registered students transitioned to the ESOL sequence. In the spring, the percentage increased to 83%. ESL Bridge students improved their language skills and scores to transition to the ESOL sequence. When students come with low ESL acuplacer scores, the CCAD steps in to assist with the ESL Pre-Bridge course. Enrollment increased from 44 students in the fall to 77 students currently enrolled. An evening course has been added due to the demand. Culinary Arts hosted 60 area youth pursuing careers in the food and hospitality industry at their second annual summer symposium at the EPCC Culinary Arts Facilities. The symposium was held to inspire and ignite passion in young culinarians by providing innovative hands-on workshops and pathways to higher education and successful integration into the food industry. It featured hands-on workshops, guest lectures, demonstrations, and free gifts. Thank you Chef Lugo and students in the culinary program for hosting future culinary students. The college was recognized as being a storm-ready institution by the National Weather Service. EPCC was recognized for improving and enhancing its weather preparedness. EPCC is one of only 34 colleges and universities in the state of Texas to receive this recognition. Congratulations to Mr. Hector Padilla and his team for earning the recognition for the college. Chair Haggerty, that concludes my report. I am happy to respond to any questions any Board member may have.
Do we have any questions? That's right. Okay. Thank you, Doctor.
Item 1.11, Consent Docket, there are none. Section 2, Administration. Item 2.1, CAK Local Policy for Appropriations and Revenue Sources Investments Policies for Second Reading and Approval.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question.
Mr. Uxer.
Aye.
Ms. Nahara.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Haggerty.
Aye.
Item 2.2, BG, CFE, DAA, DHFA, TASB Local Policies are submitted for second reading and approval.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question.
I do have a comment, sir, on the DH Local. If we can add on the notice on page 53, where it says employees shall be given a copy, if we can clarify that they can also access or should access it electronically, I think that would help for the clarification. That's it.
We will ensure that that gets in, Dr. Graham. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Call a question.
Mr. Uxer.
Aye.
Ms. Nahara.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Haggerty.
Aye.
Section 3, Personnel. Item 3.1, Discussion and Action to Approve Full-Time Staff and Faculty Recruited in Positions Funded by the Institutional Budget.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question.
Mr. Uxer.
Aye.
Ms. Nahara.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Haggerty.
Aye.
Item 3.2, Discussion and Action to Approve Full-Time Staff and Faculty Recruited in Positions Funded by Grants and/or Contracts, there are none. Item 3.3, Information Items, Resignations, and Retirements, no action is required. Section 4, Financial Services. Item 4.1, Discussion and Action on the Approval to Award Contracts for Advertising Services from Various Radio Stations for Fiscal Year 2024-2025 in an Amount Not to Exceed $350,000 Annual Aggregate.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question.
Mr. Uxer.
Aye.
Ms. Nahara.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Haggerty.
Aye.
Item 4.2, Discussion and Action on the Approval to Award Contracts for Advertising Services from Various Television Stations for Fiscal Year 2024 to 2025 in an Amount Not to Exceed $250,000 Annual Aggregate.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question.
Mr. Uxer.
Aye.
Ms. Nahara.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Haggerty.
Aye.
Item 4.3, Discussion and Action on the Approval of the Second Year of a Three-Year Subscription Agreement with SHI Government Solutions, Inc., for the Microsoft Enrollment for Education Solutions Program in an Amount Not to Exceed $230,576 for Year Two.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question.
Mr. Uxer.
Aye.
Ms. Nahara.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Haggerty.
Aye.
Item 4.4, Discussion and Action on the Procurement of District-Wide Advertising Services with Several Publication Vendors for Fiscal Year 2024-2025 in an Amount Not to Exceed $200,000 Annual Aggregate.
Move to approve 4.4 and 4.5?
Second.
Go ahead and read 4.5, Bill.
Item 4.5, Discussion and Action on the Approval to Award a Contract to Clear Channel Outdoor for Outdoor Advertising for Fiscal Year 2024-2025 in an Amount Not to Exceed $150,000 Annual Aggregate.
Do we have any questions on 4.4 or 4.5? Call a question.
Mr. Uxer.
Aye.
Ms. Nahara.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Haggerty.
Aye.
Item 4.6, Discussion and Action to Award a Contract to Hilltop Securities Asset Management, LLC, for Providing Investment Advisory Services to El Paso Community College in the Amount of $66,000 for Year One.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just had a question. Mr. Flores, is this a good idea? I think it is, since you-
I think it's a very good idea.
Okay.
Any other questions?
So you're comfortable with the results we received?
Absolutely. Very strong solicitations were provided, and an excellent financial advisor management company was selected.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more discussion? Call a question.
Mr. Uxer.
Aye.
Ms. Nahara.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Haggerty.
Aye.
Section 5, Physical Facilities, there are none. Section 6, Curriculum and Instruction. Item 6.1, Discussion and Action on the Approval to Contract Over a Three-Year Period from Assessment Technologies Institute, LLC, In-Person National Counsel, Licenseur Examination, and CLEX Review Courses for Nursing and Vocational Nursing Students in an Amount Not to Exceed $73,200.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question.
Mr. Uxer.
Aye.
Ms. Nahara.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Haggerty.
Aye.
Item 6.2, Discussion and Action on the Acceptance of a Grant from the Department of Defense, DOD, in the Amount of $391,311 with 8 cents.
Move to approve?
Second.
Can you tell us what this is all about, Mr. Smith?
Chair Haggerty, thank you. This is the annual renewal for our Contract Opportunities Center. This is jointly funded through approximately 50/50 with institutional money and grant monies. Significant impact on the local industry. We train folks how to work with local state and local contracting entities to get into the contracting business with the government.
Well, this helps our veterans, is that what you're saying?
Absolutely, veterans and others. But some of these are veteran-owned business, absolutely. Mr. Pablo Armand Dardis is here as well, so if we want to recognize him for the efforts that he and his staff do, as well as Mr. Blaine Primazic, who helps oversee the area. And as always, a big thanks to our grants office under Mr. Bob Elliott.
Well, give them our best and tell them to keep up the good work.
Just- Will do. Thank you.
All right.
Chair, if Dr. Smith would just comment in general terms about the effectiveness of this particular function? I mean, how good is it? Or is it just, do they just sit in an office, or do they actually? No, but what are their performance statistics?
So, we can get you some actual economic impact numbers. Happy to provide a presentation on that at some point in the future as well. We have numerous local businesses come in and get trained to work with government contractors and learn how to apply for contract loans, get that kind of business with the government. I'm happy to have Mr. Pablo Armand Dardis come up, and perhaps he can share a little bit of information about the impact and the number of people served and the types of entities involved.
If I understand, this particular agency doesn't charge for its services, is that-
Correct. Yeah, absolutely. There's no charge.
So, but there is a return on investment, is actually returned to the effectiveness of that. So, can you come off the top of your head, or should we reserve that for Mr. Armand Dardis's comment?
I would hate to give you a number off the top of my head and not be accurate. So, if Mr. Armand Dardis has one off the top of his head, I would invite him up. Otherwise, we can certainly share that.
No, I don't want to put him on the incidence. It's not fair with those kinds of statistics. I mean, if he'd like to come up and talk about it, that'd be super, you know? But understanding that we sprung this on him real quick, but I think we need to emphasize the effectiveness. I mean, I understand-
Yeah, and we report on this regularly, Mr. Uxer. I just don't have those numbers off the top of my head.
Well, you should.
I should. You're right.
Good afternoon, Board. Good afternoon, President. My name is Pablo Armand Dardis, and I'm the Director of the Contract Opportunities Center. To answer some of your questions, last year, you know, our division, our Contract Opportunities Center assisted over 400 businesses, received over $357 million in awards. And that kind of plays back into the system where not revenue-producing, but they all have to pay taxes on that. So, by doing the same thing, it creates jobs and maintains jobs.
But I think that's 300-plus million, and that equates into jobs and advancement of the community. And that's the kind of thing short of a real whippy-dippy proud point. That's what we need to understand, is how we're actually functioning and helping the community. And that's not necessarily within the scope of EPCC in terms of curriculum and instruction, but yet it's an extremely valuable service in far as advancing the community.
Yeah, let me jump in, Mr. Uxer, and Mr. Armand Dardis cannot. Thank you for your leadership and the great work. They counseled over 288 businesses. Over 2,000 hours were counseled. 160 clients and businesses received awards. There were over 1,580 total awards that amounted to $376,742,501. They created or retained over 8,000 jobs, and they participated in 78 training outreach events. So, we had over, just under 4,000 attendees at those events. And so, kudos to Mr. Armand Dardis and his team for outstanding work in the Contract Opportunities Center.
Well, that's fantastic. 300-plus million, I mean, is there a finder's fee in this somewhere? Can we-
He certainly deserves it.
Not him, the college.
Absolutely.
Give us a-
But if you have anyone-
It would help Mr. Flores out in his budgeting thing, if he can put that into spreadsheet. No, thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
But I think, again, we need to appreciate what you're doing for the community, and particularly for the military and the government services.
Any other discussion? Call a question.
Mr. Uxer.
Oh, of course.
Ms. Nahara.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Haggerty.
Aye.
Item 6.3, Discussion and Action on the Approval of a Cooperation Contract from the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board in the Amount of $100,000.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question. Maybe I'm not understanding this, but on the second page, it's talking about the contract shall begin upon execution and terminate on September 30 of 2024?
That's correct, Dr. Graham. So, the monies that we're talking about was the initial round for a design phase of developing the Opportunity High School Diploma Program. That design phase is slated to expire in September. Those colleges that apply and are approved to offer the program itself, House Bill 8 allows for five colleges to apply or to be selected out of the applicants to offer the program. They will have continued funding for that.
So, it doesn't end on, the contract doesn't end on that day per se for those that are approved?
Correct.
It's just a design process?
Correct, yeah. So, the design, currently, we have 13 EPCC faculty members working with their counterparts at four other colleges in the state to develop the high-school competency-based education program that's part of this Opportunity High School Diploma Program. And so, that work is wrapping up, actually, and in- And so that work is wrapping up, actually, and the competencies from that is in the hands of our business partners now. Once we receive feedback, the design partners will implement that feedback, and then the design part of the grant will come to an end.
Can you speak a little bit about what the competencies are that they're focusing on? Why quantitative reasoning, scientific reasoning, and?
Yeah, so there are five components, and they come out of the high school programs themselves. So quantitative reasoning is math. Scientific is, of course, chemistry, biology. So it's other wording for the same kinds of things that we would typically expect to see from a high school graduate.
Okay. I just hope the participants don't see that because it's going to scare them.
I hope not as well. Just as a side note, we've spoken to several ISD partners in the region about the opportunity for offering this program, especially in some of the rural areas. They're very excited because they have significant populations that have some high school, but maybe didn't graduate from high school, that can not only enroll in a high school program, but complete a career in technical education program at the same time.
Are we looking to use their facilities possibly?
Still to be determined. We anticipate we will largely use our facilities, but if need be and there's enough population, we can absolutely take the program out there.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Call a question.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Ms. Nahira.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Item six point four, discussion and action on the acceptance of a sub-grant award from Achieving the Dream, Inc., in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? What's this, what's this sub-grant for?
Dr. Smith, please.
I'm sorry, Judge, I didn't hear the question.
What's the sub-grant for?
Oh, very good. First of all, let me have a shout-out to my colleague, Dr. Julie Penley, who oversees our Achieving the Dream Initiative. So she was approached by ATD about a possible grant to take two programs. This program will focus on IT and business, and create shorter-term pathways for students to complete the projects. It fits in line very well with work we're already doing in House Bill Eight, and so we're pretty excited about the ability to work on this. You heard Dr. Servin's name earlier, and Dr. Pagel's name earlier. They will be the principal folks working on this under business and IT as well.
So who approached you?
Achieving the Dream themselves, the entity Achieving the Dream.
Just dialed her up, said we have forty-five thousand we want to get rid of.
Well, I don't think they said it quite like that, but yeah. And we said we're happy to take it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's fifteen thousand a year for three years.
I was just wondering if we had a direct line, and we could just call them up and say we need some more.
Well, I would invite Dr. Penley to talk about how she was approached. ATD is a national organization. We've been involved with Achieving the Dream for a very long time, so.
I know we've been involved with them since the beginning, but.
Yeah.
It's because we have excellent results.
We do. Well, I think there is some national reputation involved in selection, not only for this one, but for the previous item on the Opportunity High School Diploma Program as well.
Tell them to keep it coming. We'll take all we can get. Any other discussion? Call a question.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Ms. Nahira.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Item six point five, discussion and action on the approval of the Amendment Dual-Credit Partnership Agreement for private schools.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just didn't quite see the difference between that one and the next one.
Yeah, so they're very similar. The one for private schools does not talk about the FAST funding, and as you may recall, we have historically charged a hundred dollars a student if we pay for the instructor. That has been waived for the public schools, but not for the private schools.
Oh, good. Maybe we should increase it to two hundred?
I will leave that to the Board and Dr. Sarada to discuss.
Any other discussion?
Nope.
Call a question.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Ms. Nahira.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Item six point six, discussion and action on the approval of the restated and amendment dual-credit partnership agreement for public schools.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Ms. Nahira.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Section seven, Student Services. Item seven point one, discussion and action on the approval of continuing education CE tuition rates for new courses.
Move to approve seven point one and seven point two?
Second.
Go ahead and read seven point two, Bill.
Item seven point two, discussion and action on the approval of continuing education CE tuition rates for revised courses.
Any questions on seven point one or seven point two? Call a question.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Ms. Nahira.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Section eight, Community Services, there are none. Would the Board like to go into executive session?
Yes.
The Board of Trustees may conduct an executive or closed session pursuant to Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code for one or more of the following reasons. One, consultation with its attorney to seek or receive legal advice or consultation regarding pending or contemplated litigation or for any purpose authorized by law. Two, discussion about the value or transfer of real property. Three, discussion about a prospective gift or donation. Four, consideration of specific personnel matters. Five, discussion about security, personnel, or devices. Or six, discussion of certain economic development matters. The Board may also announce that it will go into executive session on any item listed on this agenda if the subject matter is permitted for a closed session by provisions of Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. Any vote regarding these items shall be taken in open session. Item one point three point one, discussion with legal counsel regarding interpretation of and compliance with Executive Order GA 44 pursuant to Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code. Item one point three point two, discussion with legal counsel regarding compliance measures related to Section 51.3525 of the Texas Government Code, responsibility of governing boards regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives pursuant to Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code. Item one point three point three, discussion with legal counsel regarding proposed unpaid suspension of employee and division of finance and administration pursuant to Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. The time is now five twelve, and the Board is in executive session.
Five, four, three.
Okay, we're back from executive session. We're in regular session. Bill, can you read? I think it's.
Item one point nine point one, discussion and take possible action regarding proposed Board Resolution Regarding Executive Order GA 44.
Have a motion.
I move to approve the Board Resolution Regarding Compliance with the Governor's Executive Order GA 44 as stated in the resolution, and to authorize the Board President to sign the resolution, and the Board Secretary to verify.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Ms. Nahira.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Item one point nine point two, discussion and take possible action regarding compliance measures related to Section 51.3525.
We're not going to take any action on this.
I apologize, Judge. Ms. Marine.
I have a second motion on one point nine.
Oh, we have a second.
So I have a second motion on one point nine point one.[1725.38]